Dunbar Board of Suckin Bean to order for Thursday, September twenty ninth. All three Suckin present, town administrator is present. We have, we have also town road agents here in the audience. Recording for the citizens of Dunbar, it's Mr. Lee Martel. Thank you Leo. Gentlemen, I have some old business to approve the minutes.
I'm going to commotion to approve the regular meeting minutes from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as amended.
One second. Any discussion on those minutes?
No, I still longer it, we just had a couple of the questions we had to make.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Q and A.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second those.
Trying to give Justin's voice a break, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna just have discussion on this, he's gonna be sealed until January first. We'll make, as we make a motion that I want him sealed to January first, is that okay?
Yeah.
And all in favor of the non-public, uh, September meeting minutes for September?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. As I said, lean, January first thing to be open.
No amendments, it was right like.
No amendments? No. As of that, right? Okay, I'm gonna open up a public comment, I'll start. Rob?
I'm gonna save it for the second one.
Okay. You have an agenda, but I can add, I can add.
When would you like to entertain me? I guess some just general highway topics and a couple of questions.
The town business will go relatively quickly.
Yeah, we'll keep going and we'll.
Okay, thank you. My post-public comment, bring it back to the board. Uh, the first thing we have is a, a request from a gentleman who works for the VA to park his car during off-duty hours in the town office parking lot. And, you know, we have a sign on there that says no parking after hours, and so it's a true exception. Uh, this gentleman works for the VA, but I don't understand why does he have to park his?
No, it's not my.
Okay. Are you the gentleman?
Yes.
Oh, sir, come on up, come on, perhaps to the front. Maybe you can help articulate this and explain, tell us why exactly.
Oh, I.
I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make clear to the tales of why does that have to be in the parking lot?
Well, it doesn't need to be anywhere in the town, I mean, I, either the school or the five, behind a police department. I work the VA, I do home, I'm an RAN, I work, I home-based primary care out of Manchester.
Okay.
So, I've been doing that for like fourteen plus years. They're moving me up this way.
Okay.
I do see veterans, I've seen veterans in, uh, in Dunbar.
Okay.
Uh, but all surrounding towns, including, now, I'm, right now, I'm scattered all over the place, including this area. But they're, they're providing, expanding the services, so.
Okay.
We're moving up this way, so I can work from home.
Okay.
Uh, and I can, they'll let me, they'll let me use, uh, a VA car I can use, but they don't allow you to park it at your house.
Gotcha.
So, they say either a, uh, federal building, which some folks park it, post offices.
Right.
And then, but, yeah. And so, then municipalities, you can park there too, so you need permission to do that.
Okay, gentlemen, you understand?
I understand now.
Um, the road agent, you said you alluded to the fact that you know the road, you know the road agent, and you know the issue is in the winter, we have to plow the roads and the parking lots.
Yep.
How are we gonna avoid any problems?
Let him park at the highway.
I did, I did, I did take a ride through there.
We can, we can let him park either in this parking lot, or it's during the evening hours, or we can let him park by the, uh, police station. I think the car may be more security parked by the police station.
It really doesn't matter to me, what folks usually do is, uh, is that, I dig my car at the VA, we're bringing it solid, though.
Gotcha.
That's what I call the VA cars at the block. And they plow there, I'll be parking in a certain place, and yeah, we get snowing in, but, you know, like, if there's snow in front of my car, I don't care. Cause I have to dig out my car anyway.
Okay.
But, uh, that's, if there was a place.
No, I'm, uh, I'm just thinking, I'm gonna speak for Jeff a little bit. Sometimes we're, we're clearing that at night, and we like to go the long way and clear that out easier instead of plowing around the car. I'd like to ask the road agent if there's a better spot for you to park during the winter months at least.
Sure.
In the summer, I don't think, um, it matters one way or another much.
In your driveway.
Is that in your driveway?
Oh, lovely my driveway. It's probably the best place.
I know you would.
It's like crazy.
Well, the only two things that I can see, the first being, it's fine, but we have an issue with people that rent the apartments next door, parking their cars in this area overnight. It's pretty congested and makes it pretty hard for the guy that plows it. We ran, run into a similar situation at the school, but there's already vehicles there, the police department parks their Cruises there and stuff. So, I am thinking that would probably be a better location. Um, obviously, you gotta do something. I mean, you can park at the highway, I don't care about that, but that's not.
It's not really.
I mean, we're, uh, they were big trucks, and it can get pretty hectic down there, and I wouldn't want anything to happen.
So, that would be.
Might we could check with, um, Chris Remmellard? And at least let him know.
Just, I just, he just needs to have a caution notification.
Well, I, I have a question too. Does that mean you'd be dropping your car there for the day and then taking the? It'll be a twenty-four hour vehicle there, some, one either.
It'll be days, I work from seven to five thirty, four days a week.
Yeah, see, I would rather you not park up here, because this is getting congested up here.
You know, I, I threw that out there because I come here, you know, to pay my taxes.
Right, right.
And I.
I want you to come and keep coming to pay your taxes.
Yeah, I thought about the, you know, other, other parks or other lots and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, like Lee says, twenty-four seven thing, seven days a week, there's no vehicle here. Well, there's no snow, it's not really a big deal, it's just, it can be a little problematic in the winter, but if you're willing to do what you have to do, and we don't get a complaint, then my car is all, I mean, we don't compare it on purpose.
Right, I didn't see that. What do you do with the police cars? I see they're all.
They, they move them kind of willy-nilly, they, the, the police chief actually, fire chief actually, I was like, I got John Wigan, and he has a system worked out with them. I don't get involved because he's the one doing it, and they are, have some sort of system that they use. But they move them from one, one spot to another, he shows up for the plow, they'll come out if they're there, and they move it. So, I mean, yours is gonna be there, and it'll be there from the end to the beginning, so. I would think we would wanna get John in the loop if it ends up up there, that a place that would be out of his way, the most beneficial.
So, we have a general consensus on it, park down there, just, he's gotta coordinate with the, with the.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to brush it off, like I said, we're more than welcome to park at the highway department, but I just don't think that's gonna be a good idea.
Can I, one more question?
Go.
Um, the parking area next to the fire department is obviously on town, on the lot. Parking in the back, is that part of the town, or is that part of the school?
The combination is a place of use portions of that as well. So, I think that that's, um, both school and the fire, I mean, the police department, do that down back. I think if he's up closer with the group of cars by the police department, it will be a better, but again, I think, let's con, uh, contact Chris Remmellard and also the fire chief and get consensus.
Gentlemen, we're in favor of it, but I, I think it'd be worthwhile, wouldn't they, see if there's any, what the drawbacks could be for the police park.
And the other thing is, can we do it as a trial basis, see if it works, and then maybe resign, but only because.
I was gonna suggest one other thing too, if we hold off on our, do we get a little feedback on those two?
But we also need a phone number, so that, in the event there's an emergency or something, you can reach out.
And we can, does it document that the VA gave me, or, and it says on there, you know, you can terminate this anytime.
Well, I think it's, um, I think generally we're in favor, and we just wanna work out the particulars of it, so the thing is, we're all listening, right, she, she, I might say.
Yeah.
And so, uh, lean, if you could just coordinate with the two, uh, department heads down there.
Chief Wayne from Maryland, because he does the following.
Right, and also.
And then. So, Chris is.
Include the place, um, that we have agreed place to let you do that.
Okay.
I can meet with them whenever they want.
Yeah, I would say.
That might work too, but let me get the full number from you.
It's on there.
Okay.
Yes, four one, they should, okay, yes.
I'll get back to you tomorrow, where you know who, um, who.
If you can have a little meeting of the minds and just do a walkthrough where they wanna.
Yeah.
Okay.
That works.
At the end of this, if it's too complicated and you can't seem to figure out, you're welcome to park at the highway department, we'll figure something out.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't think it's gonna be too complicated, we just gotta make sure the.
No, it's, it becomes problematic.
Yeah.
We have more room and we're plowing in and out there all the time, I'm sure we can work something out.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
You, you're, being here really was helpful.
Thank you.
I'd just, I guess, give you consensus if they, working out the.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, you, you, it's, it's. Okay, um, I'm gonna continue on, we have a letter of resignation from the sole director of the Dunbar basketball program. It was an auto servant, it was a nice little letter, and, uh, I just do gotta lean to some details on here, so the administrative details you need to be aware of, some expensive people to prove.
Yeah.
But we have, on, with that. I understand we have two candidates who are interested in, uh, taking up a position.
Come on forward, Lynn. Introduce yourself.
I am Christine Flight, um, Will and I have been working together over the last season. Um, and he said, I'm not doing this anymore, would you like to be chair? I said, sure.
Okay.
And then I talked with Jennifer.
I'm Jennifer, I'm leading.
Yes.
Um, I participated, one of the coaches last year for two of the teams, and also interested in taking up the program. So, I understand that she'd like to be.
So, you got the co-chairs?
Uh, I was made your chair and had to be our catcher.
Okay. I have, we have, I have no issue with that.
So, can I just point out that I discussed this with Linda, we actually had not reappointed Will for a number of years, and slipped through the cracks, but, um, he, she also had reservations or concerns that there was a one person that we weren't aware that there was anybody else involved, so the fact that you've come forward and you've kind of been helping him a little bit. We want to make it official, uh, appoint you as a rec commission individual with your titles that you vote on amongst yourselves. And then what she recommended, the town clerk, is that we put your term through this next March, and then she will revisit that when she's making up her appointments for the new year. And then at that time, you can say, yeah, this is working out okay, I'll do one near term, or I'll do three year term, and you can, you can discuss that and coordinate that with Linda.
Perfect.
That work?
Sounds great.
Can I read that? Just say, we don't want to put in thousands of names, okay? We just, we're gonna read it and approve it tonight, it'll have to be sworn in by the, uh, by the town clerk, to your convenience, she's closing price.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're gonna change that next year.
And while he's looking at that, you'll, I'll be your contact person for any expenses. The treasurer currently holds your account for funds, you want to make sure that you don't prove your own expenses, and that someone else is overseeing what you're working with.
I'll send to you.
Yeah, I'm just looking here.
Okay.
Okay, there's the term endings. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept Jennifer and Christine to the Dunbar Recreation Commission as a member of the Dunbar Recreation Commission for Term Lending March twenty twenty-three.
We mentioned the last names.
I didn't wanna try and. What, maybe you want to, Flight?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I did. And, uh, Lean?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Lean.
It's going in the middle.
And for the record, I want to just disclose that, um, my wife is a cousin of your husband.
Oh, yes, okay, I was wondering who it was, okay.
And we're not gonna hold that against you.
Okay, perfect. I always get anxious when they're like, oh, we know your husband, I'm like, oh, okay.
Well, it's funny, you know, I saw the name a years, about four years ago, I said, that's a unique name.
Yeah.
I know that name, that's my, my, my wife's family, I said, it was very interesting.
So, I'm gonna give you this, this is the hours A.
Okay.
And if you have any questions, you can email me or, um, stop by and call, I'd be glad to.
Thank you guys for stepping up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, we're volunteers.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, um, Lean just prepared some numbers.
Third quarter.
Expenses.
Expenses and revenue.
All right, Lean, what do you want to talk about for its revenues?
Um, quick, um, I did a back, about to save on paper just slightly.
That's fine.
Are you kidding me?
I did make a note on the back side, um, for outstanding revenues, not been collected to pay yet, would be the rooms and meals in the fourth quarter highway block. Grant, we don't typically see that come into the bank, and it doesn't get recorded until it hits the bank, and that'll be between November and December, so there's still about probably a hundred and fifty or more, that's outstanding. The, um, there are some revenues that are entered into the accounts here as recommended by the, um, auditor, and that will be on the very last page, the donation that we received from the, uh, Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Committee, that's a seventy-four, five, a seven fifty-three for the warrant article, so I would have to back that out if I were giving you a true, uh, account of the revenues, and then there's also, um, grant revenues that were authorized, that we collected, that are under the grant line, that account for fifty-nine hundred, that's already been spent, so it's.
Just for that.
It's a pass through, um, but it does inflate your, uh, current year date total. And I also wanted to point out that I've been working hard on tracking the current use, land use change tax, and currently I have seven outstanding pending, um, current use taxes that will be processed within the next couple of weeks, and those are gonna be in the amount of forty-two thousand one twenty-five, and that's the terms for it. I don't report the conservation, so that is kept under a different liability account. So, that's gonna increase our first land use.
That's for Gordon?
No, there's seven on standing ahead. I have seven of them outstanding. Uh, so we'll see that first number on page one, which is current revenue of fifteen thousand two ten will exceed our, uh, projected budget.
Have those been collected, did or pending?
No, they're, they're pending, I, the assessor has to come in and, um, make a recommendation to board the assessors.
Okay, perfect. And now, let's go on to the expenses.
All right, expenses again.
We haven't seen the rooms and meals, right, that's a.
No, that won't come till the end of, when I, she'll have the number when we set the tax rate, and that's gonna be happening in the next week's check.
Okay.
And then I'll be able to enter.
But she automatically calculates that sitting in a miracle.
Correct, yeah, cause she knows of that number, yeah.
You don't know to.
Yes. Uh, I'm sorry, gentlemen, questions on revenues, I need to make sure.
No, I, I understand.
Okay, Jeff, okay, just, okay, continue on.
All right, so I'm, I present you, and I try to do this quarterly, so the board is where, where we're at, uh, for budgeting, uh, expenditures within the departments. We should technically be in about twenty-five percent remaining for the next three months. Um, you'll always see some that are at a hundred percent, only because they may be, uh, something that's not distributed until the end of the year. Um, the fire department has such an account, like their, um, fire, fire adminis, part-time administration, so that sometimes doesn't, it gets, uh, depleted closer to the end of the year. Um, so, within each department, you'll find that, that the numbers are really high, a lot of times it's something that may still have something pending. Bottom line, right now, we still have thirty-six percent. Again, things like longevity will just be dispersed, there are, you know, um, payroll services for the annual disbursements for the different positions that get, like this, um, board of assessors is seven, uh, about two thousand or two thousand. But there's nothing that's really.
Nothing else, like, nothing.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've overspent on our advertising, which the board knows, we've been doing a lot of that lately. And, uh, the only thing that may not be close in here are some, uh, fuel lines for some of the gas and diesel fuels, um, for the month of September, along with, um, nothing really stands out as far as how.
Well, we're going into the year, it's, it's tight, so we just wanna continue to monitor.
That's right.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions?
It looks like the highway department got a little way to go, but I think he's working on that now.
The way I've done this.
Good bumps and bills down the way.
Not gonna end up like you did last year.
Okay.
Okay, that was a one-time thing.
All right.
Be used to it.
All right, I'm going to go to the mailbox, so that's all right, gentlemen, thank you, Lean.
Okay.
Um, there's an issue here, I want to wait till when he gets back, but I think he's a maintenance issue with his pictures. I don't know how it's gonna, I, that's gonna require repair, more likely.
Well, he's doing a good job in monitoring his, the needs he, in his first department, so. Greg Miller, a handyman, was up there on the roof, and one of them was up there, he had some problems with the, uh, brackets that hold, um.
That ice and snow.
So, okay.
That's pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's nice and snow, good, that doesn't look like a big expense there either, so I think we should work on getting him up there to give us a price on that.
Okay.
Like, well, more factories than there is all we need.
And hopefully that will stop any leaking?
Yeah, that looks like. Speed work right out of it.
Right. All right, if you have any questions, I'll move on. Health trust this year, Lean alluded to this already, I think, last, last meeting, but, uh, we've had surpluses from the health trust in the past, this is for health, uh, and health insurance for employees. Due to COVID, they're expecting no rebates this year, no reimbursement.
What COVID?
President said it's all gone. All right, we have five, we got six. All right. I'm gonna open up for.
Do you want to answer, Jeff?
Yes, Jeff.
My turn?
Your turn. Thank you. Well, yeah, I don't wanna forget about you.
No, that's fine, I, I don't really have a lot, I just wanted to raise a couple things, the paving, projects coming along good, um, financially, I don't know exactly where we're at, all the bills are coming in, it's not moving now, as you're saying, so we should fill that a little better.
Our fund is received in a separate.
Yes.
Track in the separate account.
And you fund those bills through the, you know, on there?
Correct.
The ones that go toward more.
Yes, we've spent to date just over three hundred thousand, about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but now the more substantial projects start rolling in. And I'll have to keep monitoring those because we want to make sure that the money gets moved into the general fund, because we're paying them.
We should get there, seven thousand six or seven hundred thousand, then kind of done.
Yes, I would think. We got one thing that's against us, in asphalt prices, eighty-five dollars a ton. When we crafted this plan and, and last year, we based it on seventy-two dollars a ton.
Yeah.
Um, when we put it out for bid, the bid price was seventy-eight dollars a ton, and every vendor that we went to was commenting in industry as an escalation charge, which is based on the liquid asphalt charge. At that time, liquid asphalt was six hundred and sixty dollars roughly a unit, now it's close to eight hundred a unit. So, that transferred to a seven dollar and change increase, basically seven fifty from the seventy-eight. So, if you factor that in, if you took the, during, how much payment we're putting down this year, priced only seventy-five hundred tons, we're a hundred thousand dollars difference.
But without reception next year, we'd have gotten.
It may, I mean, no, it's not a guarantee, um, it's like any other commodity, it does fluctuate.
You have to put a cringe, a crunch in how much you're limited, factor in which.
What we were trying to do was, we did some, the improvements that we did physically to the road on Robert Rogers Road, came out of the regular operating budget, and just keep the paving and the gravels and all that stuff.
Which in the two years you could work down.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's, that was my goal. Um, so, that's the unfortunate part of it, we knew it was, wasn't gonna go as far, and so far it's playing out that way. But we'll have to wait, it's a little premature to look for, you know, numbers coming in, next year, hopefully, it's gonna go up a little more.
I will take my hat off to the guys doing the paving, that road I've been on have been very smooth, and they're crowned.
Yeah.
And, uh, all of their work seems to be top-notch, where they're going into the driveways.
Definitely, that was part of the deal, we talked about it, we were actually with the paving company, and we wanted to make decent transitions to the asphalt driveways. It's difficult because we're building the road up and all the grades and everything, nothing's right, but I do think they're coming out pretty good, about as good as we could do. And yes, we, Robert Rogers Road by far was the worst road, so we picked out one to do first, and we used the one asphalt. To get the shape of it back and.
A lot of times when they're redoing them, they seem somewhat narrower than they were originally, and these roads are staying to their full width.
Yeah, it's just exactly what they were in the initial.
Yeah, that's.
No, I'm very.
Very well appreciated.
Very pleased with the workmanship, but I knew, we've used them over the years, they've been very good as far as quality control and all that. I mean, you know, it's like anything else, it's, nothing's perfect, but they're, they're pretty good, they do a good job, they're pretty attentive.
I mean, I can't feel any dips in the roads.
They will come back, I mean, it's just, you know, frosty and all that, but I mean, it's, it's very nice right now, we've, the townspeople are pretty appreciative too.
Are we, um, in case somebody asks us this, like, when, are we relining them before winter?
Yes, we scheduled to come next week, weather permitted. That's the goal. So, that's where we are with that, and once we get a few more bills, then we can come, it'll give them a little discussion and follow through that a little more, if you'd like.
There was a couple issues for last meeting, I think Lean needs to talk to you about from last meeting. Actually, I think, um, Jeff's gonna either address some, I'm gonna, but we, Jeff and I took a ride out to meet that homeowner that had complained. Okay. Over a month long.
We actually didn't talk to the homeowner, but we talked to, we talked to.
I just got another email tonight from her, so, you've already been out there and.
Well, we went, I, I ran in the day, but it was raining, it was an off the, amount of time to go out there, so we went out and looked, and we ran into the neighbor that has kind of blocked the cover upstream of this property, which is called Farm Problem, and he was very receptive, and, uh, it was just lucky we ran into him.
We were, we were out there in the rain looking at the road.
He came out to see what was going on.
And then he offered to fix the problem.
Yeah, no, he's gonna.
On his, on his land.
He's gonna correct the, the issue that his landscaper caused us. I met with his landscaper later that day, and sometime when they said within the next couple of weeks, and the landscaper's gonna give me a call, we switched numbers and all that, so. We got that part of it under control. This, uh, we're, uh, uh, we need to pave a, like a, a little bump or whatever at the end of the driveway to keep the water from going down. Her whole property slopes away from the road, down in the road, so I mean, the water runs downhill regardless, and it's been that bad.
It didn't just happen yesterday, it took a long time.
And I'm sure she was sick of it, but I think, it happened once before, and we resolved this problem, and then it reoccurred, I think it was a big rainstorm this year, and that's what caused it, was the cover. They enhanced the landscaping on that property, and put rocks and everything in front of it to kind of hide it so it's not as ugly on the uphill side.
So, she didn't look like she was home, so she probably hasn't heard any of this.
Right, I just received, it's probably five o'clock tonight.
Okay. So, can you, you love enough to answer the?
I do.
You want me to talk to her, yeah.
But I will, I've asked her for her phone number, so I'll get that to you.
The, um, with the paving company, I've already spoken to them about it, and once we're done the paving, there may be some other driveway issues we have to address, so we'll come back and we'll do more, so we're gonna wait and see. Cause there's always some issue, you know.
It was a.
And this will be one, I will take care of that.
It was one.
The best we can.
Um, just, wondering here, there was another dirt road issue, uh, on Tenny Hill Road?
Yeah, it's still dirt.
Yes, but I think it's just a drainage issue, uh, I want, want you to talk to the homeowner about that and do a site visit on that, if you're pleased.
All right, I'll give you. Well, it's not an L. Again, the driveway, everybody complains, including myself, the police department even complained, you can't get in and out of my driveway without, you know, cha, your teeth chattering all the time. It's a big hole there, all, all the time. I throw, I keep throwing dirt in it, but then it rains and washes it out.
If you'll just take a site visit and see what, I don't wanna just give the.
It was good for a while, and now all of a sudden it's just gone.
Yeah.
It's been like that for months.
Uh, we're upgrading the roads and stuff now, as, as today's mission, and gonna continue in the next weeks.
I've seen the, uh, a couple of dirt roads on my end, and I should create a, go with that today, leave off tomorrow and do that Monday.
And one more concern, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we talked with, uh, not related to me, the Kaminski's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, one of the things that we said we'd look into.
Yeah, I haven't got a sign.
Okay, and it's one, it's fine.
I kind of forgot about it.
Okay, but just, uh, just reminder, a courtesy reminder.
What was it?
Children's play sign. I think we already have a poll already, and they just got melted.
Yes, it is. Kids are playing, something like, caution, children.
Exactly. Okay, okay, and that was, that was all I have, I said, and, uh, another.
I guess it was.
I've been doing some, okay, I got one more good thing for you.
Okay.
Pete does not speed on my road.
Oh, I know he doesn't.
Because I just wanna say, I've seen that truck go up.
Pete doesn't speed on any road.
Yeah, no. No, but it's, uh, I just wanna say, very conscientious.
Conscious in the first.
Person, and so I've been noting that, I waved to him every time, but he's going speed limit, if not, not even close to speed limit.
He's not an issue at all.
Okay, so I just thought I'd pass it on to you, it's a good thing.
All right. Um, another item. The old town truck we have, the one that the new, it's not even new anymore, it's a little west.
The one that the new, it's not even new anymore, it's probably his old western car replaced.
The International.
Yeah, yeah. We had kept it thinking it was there, we might need it or something, but we've never used it. We had to have a little bit of work done on it to spring, to spree some stuff to make sure it works. So here we are in the fall again. Um, I don't know what to do. I don't know if we should keep it just in case.
I want to ask you a question and you maybe answer me. The new trucks, like you say, ours is a couple of years old now, so now you have some background with it. I know my company's bought several new trucks and the new trucks. Seem to go down for very small electronic reasons and you can't operate the truck. It just feels like a limp mode.
Yeah, and we have not had that problem.
You haven't?
No, we've used it quite a bit. Um, we're kind of waiting for something like that to happen.
Yeah.
Um, but. We don't have to get rid of this other truck. It's not really worth a lot of money.
Is it running more sitting there like that?
Well, anything like that, just sitting and not being used or whatever. We started out every so often and moved around the area Pete does. But I just.
What, what about?
Oh, yeah, no, we take care of that.
What about actually using it? Let, let Pete use it for me once, one, a couple of weeks.
All the summers, it doesn't have air conditioning and it was nice. It's automatic and it's comfortable. It's a hard thing to do. But we can. And I just, I, I'm undecided. I sort of wanted to ask your opinion.
How much money do you think it's worth?
I don't know. I mean, it goes to the state auction. I would think five, six thousand dollars would be cost. You know, you know.
The trucks that apply won't bring much money.
No. Not in, in that atmosphere. You know, and everything functions on it. We replaced it because it's worn out non-borrowed time. So you don't kind of want to use it as an everyday truck. The only reason I'm asking that tonight is the auction comes up mid-October. If we're gonna send it to that, we have to get it.
We have a deadline.
Yeah, we have a deadline and all that. I'm not convinced a hundred percent we should do that, because I kind of agree with Dave. You know, something could happen and we might wish we had it and think ourselves about everything.
Then I want to go on a record there. Nothing, if, if, nothing happens with the new truck, it's gone next October.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say. October typically with that type of vehicle is better to put in the auction because this time here, people are thinking in that old springtime, they've had enough of it, they don't want it. But anyway, it's not gonna bring a lot of money.
I'm also thinking down the road a little bit. But say you brought in another person into your department.
Yeah.
They're always gonna start with the oldest truck first and.
Well, Pete and I have talked about that. We brainstorming all about that, that as an option. But then you're gonna still have the repair issues.
It will. But it might get us through just a few years before spending.
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand dollars again, but you know, the other thing I was saying is, I know all our vendors have trucks that are called trucks. And some have slid off the road this last year.
Yeah, no, that could happen.
If we needed a truck to finish routes for the town, even though it'd be a different vendor, we might have to do something else as far as how we pay them.
Yeah.
It does give us another option.
No, and that's what I mean. It's like a security insurance.
For let's say under ten thousand dollars, we have this security sitting there.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with you at all.
So the thing is, your job is to keep it operational like no other.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll hold on.
I understand.
What do you think, Justin?
I think the same thing. It's hard to, it's not worth much.
No, it's not.
Hard to get rid of it.
Yes.
We almost lost, what, two trucks last year? One slid off the road and the other ones are running, it's all at one time.
Yeah.
It's an everyday occurrence.
It's just part of this.
Yeah.
No, okay, that settles that one then.
As long as nothing major going.
Yeah.
Major, major repair. It's like a stop pin or something.
We thought there was a clutch issue. We took it to the mechanic and he was able to free everything up. It didn't need that four or five thousand dollars a year. It was a four hundred dollar. So, I mean, that, that was.
Yeah, as long as we can keep repairs to.
Yeah, minimum. And I don't know what it costs the town insurance thing. I don't think it's a lot of money.
No, it's not.
It's, it costs something.
But at this point, it's life.
Yes, exactly. Okay, good, that settles that. That makes me, because I, we've been talking about it quite a bit. In fact, we were talking about it today and I said, oh, I'll come be a jerk.
Are you saying it's real cheap insurance?
Yeah.
Of course, as soon as it's gone, someone's gonna have.
Yeah, that's exactly.
I know, that's kind of, even if it sits there, it's worth it, right?
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing is, Kelsey Rowan, the guy who subdivision was approved a little over a month ago. He's at the planning board level. He's got a certain amount of things that he has to do. To finalize the plan and get it recorded, which I haven't heard yay or nay or whether he's gonna do it. The other thing is, the turnaround. We had indicated. The town was gonna foot the cost of constructing the turnaround.
Was he paying for that one pole?
No.
No.
Um, I know the trees were cut there, uh, day or two ago. About two days ago on the turnaround?
I don't know.
There was a, there was a big spruce tree right there.
On Guy's property.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, but basically where I was going with this, I was gonna ask you guys if I could pull the trigger on starting to get that turnaround process done, like. Calling Unitil because they were supposed to move the pole and all that, and they'll just have to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, because that's gonna make it easier to plow.
That's what the major problem is now. We could turn around if, with the. Stipulation in the Mike subdivision enhances the turnaround, makes it better. But without that pole there, we could make it adequate.
That, that's what I was going.
Adequate turnaround.
Subdivision is not key to the.
Yes.
To a adequate turnaround.
Okay, then I can get a hold of the Unitil and you have no problem. You stop that process. And I have no idea how long it's, I don't know what this cutting the trees is. I hadn't been down there. I don't know.
I'm thinking, all I can think is they moved that pole to the opposite side of the turnaround and the trees were almost directly in the way, so they probably.
Yeah, I haven't heard.
I wouldn't assume anything. I would make contact. May I tell us, see what's going on?
It was a private company that did, well, the main thing is getting the pole out of the turnaround.
Like is it, it held it, prevent you from turning around?
It's right in the middle of the right.
Correct.
Okay, oh, as long as you guys are open to it, I'll stop the process. And again, I don't know how. Because Unitil had told us that they were gonna be on the cost of moving the poles. Yeah. Second thought. We may have to pay the toll.
As I'm saying, we just like to pay the toll.
Yes, some sort of.
Yeah.
It's how it ended up.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that.
Oh, you were. Okay. No, one last thing. No, one more thing.
On your turf.
We'll prepare. Yeah. Is it done or is it?
Well, I hatched it.
But it, it will survive the winter.
Well, I think it'll survive the winter, but I love the.
I think it should be stuck down.
I, I talked some stuff.
Okay, could, could you get a.
All right.
Could you get a, a estimate on that at your convenience?
I actually got a, a company's number, so I should call up to get emails out of it.
We need to.
In fact, I met, um, one of the river's, Keegan Price there.
Yeah.
Um, in here with Donna this week, and he said he's very slow right now, so I'll get on the momentum.
Yeah.
I'll get the three of the prices.
I just wanted to, I, in the middle.
Oh, I agree. I, I.
Oh, no, I kind of forgot about it too, Jeff, so.
No, I just brought it up. I mean, I.
I do want to point out that this government billing line does not include the expenses that were approved to make stuff.
I, I know.
Yeah.
And there's also ten thousand dollars more that's not showing there that I can calculate.
Okay, I'll do detail.
Okay, I, I get, again.
I just farm a patch.
Understood. So it can hold for a little while, but not permanent.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
That's all I got. Thank you, Jeff. I'm gonna write down, uh, how we garage roof.
Yeah, e- even if we, uh, we can encumber money if we have.
A repair at this point, but maybe hit the rate for like a long-term.
Solution.
Yep.
Do you follow your home roof thing? We have funds for the bandstand. We want to consider looking at that as well.
That roof?
Yeah.
We did get a notification, um. What thing is, uh, that went from being slate to being that plastic roof?
No, it wasn't. It was always the plastic one.
Plastic roof looking like slate.
Right.
Um, if we go asphalt, does anybody that had originally built that or worked on it care about that?
I guess it would be the garden club, I think the fundraising.
No. No, it wasn't garden club.
Was it?
No. What was the group?
Special committee that.
Oh.
Bandstand committee, actually.
Oh, bandstand.
Common.
Yeah. Against Don and Barney.
I think, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak to them, but from what I've heard from them, it, that doesn't sound like a good idea. They thought maybe a metal or, or wood. But, um, I know they didn't like the idea.
You're talking wood shingles?
Well, wood shingles, yeah. Which is very maintenance.
I, 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 there's nothing wrong with thirty-year shingles. You know, the architectural shingles, they look nice.
Yeah, they were thinking, I think, more of a, an authentic looking bandstand which.
But it's not authentic. It's just a, it's a twentieth century beer. To me, it's. They're, they're pla- they're plastig- plastic, I'd say is junk.
This is the first, the second. This is the first.
Yeah, it's a.
It's not long at this, these roofs.
Well, that's what I thought. I didn't.
It's not like the town hall because we figured it would.
Right.
Now, what's going on with that roof?
It's, the plastic is fragile, brittle, breaking up.
Breaking up and falling off.
So the, there's so much wind in that corner of the common, it just, it's probably doesn't hook it up off the.
Um, is that group still in play or that's all this?
Well, they, they.
The ma- the maintenance money was.
Put their fingers in it, let me put it that way. They did turn the money over to the town and everything.
We, we owe the money.
They'd like to get their, you know.
And we're responsible for the.
Basically, they want you to pay for it, but they want.
Well, no, they just want to have, they want to be able to have their voice turned, that's all.
We have some money from that.
Get them in here.
Okay.
A little while ago, the town got a metal roof donated. And I was thinking maybe that could be another avenue to, uh, go, you know.
With one of the Dunbar, the benefactor?
Yeah, of it.
We don't want to trust any names.
No, benefactors.
The, the, um, Hearst House.
Yeah, so rather than putting names out there or anything, you know, on.
I know, I know one thing though, uh, we had this, um, put out to bid and we decided to hold off for various reasons. But, um, I hate to ask vendors for donations if you're not using them for other things as well. That's it.
Wow, alright, alright.
I, I would, what I, I, I would recommend is talk to the person who scouted the thing before, did the other, uh, building before. I was, I wasn't part of that, but I wasn't the one who spoke to the vendor. So I can talk to this person.
If you could pass that information on.
Yeah, well, I can. Something else, you know.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
I think when I, uh, when I explain the board's suggestion of the ASCAP, I think that would be a kind of like anxiety force to get that going.
Can you, we, we can work it for a couple, uh, it doesn't, I mean, it's not.
It's not immediate.
Thank you. That's what I'm.
But it is something to look at. It is something to look at, so.
I'll, I'll, uh, talk to someone and see. Um, I did see advertised, I believe, within the title out there, a new shingle-looking metal as well. Where they overlap, that's pretty attractive looking, very, very attractive looking too, instead of trying to do standing seam down those.
The standing seam might not be too bad either.
No, but the thing is, there's so many options out there in such a small amount, I don't think it's, it's not, can't be that terribly costly.
It's not like a project deal.
Correct.
Or I've done it before myself.
And, and by rights, we do have made this money last.
There's an account specific for maintaining.
Yeah, we have funds, that's right.
So we have funds for it.
Yeah, and I don't know what the number is and.
And remind me, Lean, when we read in all of one poster, did we have him do the.
I think they were all done.
Uh, they're done.
They were all done?
Yep, they're done.
Okay.
But I think we didn't want to leave that one poster.
Correct.
No, everything's pretty up to snuff.
Except the.
From what I can see, I mean, I, again, I haven't gone around and looked at it this year, but, uh, I haven't heard any complaints.
Yeah, we will complain if you do follow up.
Alright, so let's, let's, no, the action, I, I'm here, was gonna, if you would just do some talking.
I will.
And we'll leave it at that.
Lock on that door, you see what comes out.
Exactly, and if nothing comes out, we can act on it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just remembering, I understand, lifetime span of the metal roof is a lot greater than putting even architectural shingles especially in the sun.
And I'm, and I'm thinking that such a small amount, maybe we shouldn't, and the idea is like this, architectural metal shingles, but David's willing to. They're out there.
Everything's limited lifetime now. Who's limited, they're wondering?
I don't know. On the TV, on the TV, I've heard it say, you're gonna live them. Alright. Let me just, uh, I think that closes the, um, the mailbox for now. I'm gonna move on to Bump a Comment. Bump, Bump a Comment.
Okay, I am.
Okay.
I guess a couple of weeks ago, you had a selectmen's meeting.
Yes.
And you made some awards of contracts that never went out to bid. They shouldn't have gone out to bid. Uh, in, in my opinion and in other people's opinion, had asked me how come they went out that way, and I don't know the reason. Uh, I understand, you know, you're talking about two, uh, electrical main panels for different reasons. One suppression was for the upstairs electrical that we thought we were gonna have to do anyhow. But they were presented and you have no comparison as to what the numbers were. So even if you segregated it so that they came out separately, I guess the process several years ago that was adopted. Was if it's under five thousand, you got, at least tried to get at least three phone calls. If it was over five thousand, you got, uh, written, uh, calls.
Yes.
And attempted to get three, and we know sometimes you can't get three.
Correct.
And, and then anything over ten thousand, you're supposed to put it out to bid. Now, I'd like to see the thing done soon also, but it does. I wasn't gonna say anything because I thought one of those people would come in. But no one's gonna come in, so I'm gonna speak for those that aren't here.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, Chris.
Yeah, I'd like to address it well.
Yeah, just before, before we address that. The reason that it upsets me is that it's, if, if you segregated it even, you would have had to get three phone, written phone calls. You would have had, uh, three written calls from someone. And you would have comparison, because no one knows if you're getting a good deal or a bad deal, because you got the only deal. And most electrical contractors have guys that read schematics that could do the same thing with the, with the blocks, with the, uh, we call it a box. You know, with the, uh, with the, uh.
Fire.
Panel, you know. They wouldn't have a problem setting it up, so, uh, I, I, well, I understand the guys there by con- convenience, it's only by convenience. And it might not be the lowest bid, and even if there was a bid that was a little lower, it might make more sense to use that person. But if there's a big difference, uh, you know, unfortunately, no one knows, because you only went to one source. And that's my problem with single source, uh, contractors.
Well, I'm gonna give you just a little background, just so you know how each one of these things came up. We made the motion on three different divisions of it in that one night, but they didn't come up all at once. Um, what first happened is during my job inspections over there, I was made aware that. The electrical engineer of record that worked for the architect did not include, which he should have, our sprinkler system in the total load of the building. So when Unitil sized the, um. Transformer that goes outside on the pole, our sprinkler system wasn't included in there. And that is the largest single-phase motor that you can possibly do without going to a three-phase system. Which we don't have three-phase system closed in town here, so we had to go that route originally when we did our sprinkler bid, which you were here for. So, um, we found out during that process that that wasn't included, and the electrical contractor onsite for the addition brought that to our attention. So I got ahold of the architect and it took about two weeks to get a meeting, and I'm trying to make this a little shorter than everything I did. So we got the architect there, the electrician there, the project manager, the super, Mike Cummings was there, the fire, uh, chief was there, myself. And a couple of other people. And a couple of other people, but we got everybody together, we did a walk through the building, and looked at the requirements and what was required, also the sprinkler guy. And we looked at, um, a couple of things that the engineer of record pulled up, was that we needed a fire rated room downstairs for the, um. Fire suppression pump, as well as the fire suppression control panel. We were unaware of that, cause the fire sprinkler guy puts them in commercial building all the time that are just out in the open. But in that building, they said that we needed to have a controlled room, just the same as the, um, the Lula, the machine room downstairs. So, Chacon, and I don't think, I don't even know if these guys know that, built that room at free of charge to, um, the town of Dunbar. And he also had his drywall, two layers of fire raised drywall in there to make it a fire rated room. Um, all this stuff was brought to us by his electrician, because he was onsite. So, two weeks later, we finally got the revision back from the electrical contractor of record. We couldn't go above ground with the wires anymore, we had to go underground, cause they don't care about that the street, but they don't want the. The line that goes and attaches to the building to burn, if the building was to burn. So, the electrician of record gave us a two thousand dollar credit back for going above ground with the new panel. And he put underground piping to the building, uh, five different pipes, two for the telephone and, um. Two for the telephone and, um, wifi, and two for the new power, um, panels to go, one for the, uh, fire suppression system we were putting in for the sprinklers. And one for the four hundred and fifty amp panel that they was part of their bid. So, he put the piping in and charged us a reduced rate of four thousand dollars for that. Jeff did all the digging and the prep work and backfill through his budgets, was a real saver for the town. So, now that part's done, um, coming into the building to do the fire suppression sprinkler, we were always gonna use the contractor, hopefully, that was onsite already, because. When they're doing the addition, they're running all the red wires down, the group is about that big, and they're about eighth inch thick, so there's a huge amount of fire. Suppression, fire alarm stuff from the new building, from the Lula, and all the different lighting and stuff that has to go into this, um, new addition to be towed. And that wiring all come, trunk through the building that has to go into the panel. So, that panel, come to find out, had enough slots in it to do either the Lula or the sprinkler system, but not both. So, come to find out from the electrician that that panel needed to be replaced, and I brought John Wigan onsite, cause being the fire chief, I don't know anything about the fire panels. And he was kind of excited about it, because the new panel that would have to be put in there, would have zones in it, so he could shut off certain zones of the building later. Say there was a problem in the upstairs of the building, he could shut that zone up, but the library would still be protected by fire protection, and so would the sprinkler system, and so would the Lula. So, he could zone the building off with this new panel, so we asked the contractor to get us a price to upgrade that panel. And that was for the fire alarm panel, which we didn't know, nobody knew had to be upgraded until he looked inside of it. So, we found that out, so I asked to give us a separate price on that, we had already given them a four thousand dollar bid for the piping underground that was done with. And part of the electrical engineer for the building's design, one thing we lucked out on, we would have had to have a second four hundred and fifty pan- pan, amp panel. For our sprinkler system, if we didn't have that original line coming into the building, which was a two hundred amp line. Because with a separate line not including it in the whole building, we were able to use that existing line that comes into the building now, and just put a new panel in. Of a two hundred amp panel, but we only needed a hundred amps of it, um, for our, um, fire suppression sprinkler system. So, as you can see, it was kind of a work in progress, as each one of these phases and steps came up, the electrician brought it to our, our knowledge that we use the. Um, engineer of record, and he gave back the electrician the information he needed on what size panels and whatever. So, as part of the new one, we have a four hundred and fifty amp disconnect outside now, with the new underground wires. We have a two hundred amp panel, second panel downstairs, all wired up for it and ready, and we have that new room which Chacon provided for us. So, as part of this process, I didn't feel it was better to bring another electrician in there, and one of the things I didn't wanna do was all those new wires that come in from the addition. Have to go into that new fire rated panel, it didn't make any sense for us to have another electrician to come in and put the. Same red wires into that alarm system that one guy was already working on, you see? So, you know, one guy is supplying all the wires and all the workmanship and all the warranty to that panel, whereas if you have a second contractor come in. And there's an issue or problem, well, who do you go after to fix it then? We had this guy do this half, this guy do that half. And so, would have got very convoluted, um, and hard to work with. So, the only part of those two things, um, they all made sense, cause they were steps, and we found out as it was going along, and I kept these guys. Every meeting, I'm like, next meeting, we're gonna get a price to do this portion of the work, because we just found this out this week. And as I find these things out, I'll give these guys a call and let them know, this is gonna be coming up. So, it was a, it was quite a process, and I know you weren't here for all of it, so you didn't see all the steps, but as we did these meetings, I tried to give little breakdowns of it. After we did both of those items with the contractor, I asked him, I said, upstairs, as part of the project that Chacon is doing through the architect. On the stage, they're putting a two hundred amp panel up there, so there's a new four hundred and fifty amp panel downstairs, a two hundred amp panel upstairs. And as part of putting that panel in, I asked him, I said, could you provide lighting? Because we reached out to the people or benefactor from upstairs, to see if they were doing any lighting in the core part of the seating area upstairs. Which has no lighting in there for emergency or fire, even if we didn't use the building. And they said they were only providing lighting for the stage. So, I went through the electrician and we decided, instead of doing a hang down lighting, whereas if they ever did a suspended ceiling, and you put a metal box up in the original ceiling. You couldn't move the box to where the suspended ceiling would go, if they did another, uh, tin ceiling. So, it was decided that the six inch LED lights that mount right up in the drywall would go best, we did. Four rows of five lights that could be, um, dim and shut off per row for lighting in there. And he's gonna put a switch real close to the panel, so it wasn't expensive. And then, I told him, we'll need to operate the switches from the other side of the room, if you came in from the other end. And what he did is decided, the best thing to do, because the wiring's so old upstairs, is not use the existing switch. But put a new switch system in that was, um, electronic, didn't need any wire, wireless. So, he gave us that third bid.
No, no, I think, right, I heard the whole thing, when you explained it, the, at the selectmen's meeting. You're giving me this, the same package that you presented then, but my point still is, in saying, that's where. I knew there was probably not much that could be done about the other two projects. I would have hoped that at least that third project, someone was given a chance, so you would have comparative numbers. Cause at least if you're to let it known that you may have to put it out there, because of bidding process.
Yeah.
Someone might have sharpened their pencil.
Um, we did, we did a calculation, if you, I don't know if you heard this, I thought that number on the lighting seemed a little steep to me, and then I divided it out by the number of fixtures, and the fact that he was providing the fixture. And the fact that the ceiling is fifteen feet high in there, and you gotta work up on the catwalk and the mezzanine upstairs. And actually, I think it was a very cheap price for us to get for that.
But you have no comparison, and perhaps the people are wondering, what's the difference in the numbers? You know, I, I would hope going forward, when, regardless, if you're doing a project, and you encounter a problem, and you have to get bids for. And they come up over those numbers, the magic numbers, five thousand and ten thousand.
Yeah.
Then at least you give others the opportunity to look at it, and you may end up with the person you're talking about.
Yeah. And you're right, even if I found somebody that was a slight bit less than him, I would probably use the electrician.
And, and actually, that's a good point, because that person has something there that's already invested, which is, is time that was there. But if the prices are greatly different, and if that would have been bundled as one package, I'm sure you had a no problem. Because a lot of contractors right now, that did a lot of work during COVID, for businesses that were shut down, and they. Tried to ramp up and get things squared away in businesses or residential areas, and now starting to slow down. Has nothing to do so much with a recession coming, has to do with, a lot of this work was done when people were at home, or businesses were shut down. And they improved their businesses then, and right now, it's gonna, you're getting through a slow spell, where there is a whole lot going on on the smaller market.
Yeah, I'd like to sum up this, the thing is, I, I recognize this as constructive, uh, recommendations, thank you, Bob. I think, uh, we should be more aware of that as we move forward, uh, we can't, we, we track what we did. However, as we move from this day forward, we gotta make sure we, uh, we, we go, we go with.
And that's enough, Paul, but Leo did bring that up that week.
I heard that too, but, and that, after that went online, I got a few phone calls, so I said, why don't you go through the meeting and talk?
Yeah.
Guess what, no one wants to come here and say anything, but they're willing to talk in the community about what's going on.
Yeah.
And so, my, I could have been remiss and said, you know what, I don't, cause I really didn't wanna ruffle anyone's feathers and say, hey, you're doing a bad job, cause you're lying.
Yeah.
But.
And you know, a lot of people don't understand, I think, little, actually, I was probably only fifteen times beating on this different electrical stuff as it came up, and. You know, it's enormous amount of meetings, and to try and get a.
I just thought to say, Dave was trying to pull his hair out, he had none to pull.
But my point is, people wanna complain, but no one wants to come and let you know what it is that they're complaining about. And so, I wasn't gonna just sit back, I came in, and, technically, they're right.
Yeah.
You know, and so, if you're gonna do things like that, you should at least get, try, even. Even if you broke it up into three pieces and got phone calls, uh, written, uh, written phone estimates, so, is a lot better than.
Yeah.
Not doing anything at all.
Yeah.
Good to know people are watching the videos.
Yeah, actually, the, the week that they had, it was a hundred and, a hundred and eighty-four, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Well, we are making good progress on the, uh.
So, I just wanted to, you know, just wanted to chat with you and let you know that, you know, this is, this is one of the things that.
Yeah, we heard Leo's concerns, we didn't take it with a dull air, I mean, we, we're trying to do the best we can, as you said, and you know. Every bit of, every bit as we go ahead there, you know, we'll try and do more and more and more, but, um, again, at some point, that you just gotta go ahead and keep, keep the project moving as well.
Right, you, you wanna get it done, number one, and that's all I feel, but at the same time, people are right, it was a process, and we're not using it.
Right. Okay, just, I'll set Bob, I say all right?
All set, all set.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the board, I'm the town administrator.
Nothing right now?
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board now. Justin, I want you to talk to anybody.
I have a lot of water.
Uh, just for the record, Justin's had a medical procedure, he's not doing so good. But he's improving, as everything goes by, leaving it at that. Uh, Daniel, I'm gonna go to you.
Um, I just, I had a note down here before Jeff came in, that we did visit the seventy-nine Long Pond Road site, and the, the neighbor was very responsive and helping out where the water was being created, which. Was very appreciated by Jeff and myself, because it saves Jeff from doing a lot of work there. Um, and I wanted to remind everybody that next Wednesday is Coffee with a Cop.
And let's talk about.
I will pull it up on my calendar, cause I have it in the A S.
We did have a quorum this week of, uh, two selectmen met with the, uh, um, the committee.
Benefactor.
Benefactor and the, the, um, library slash town hall restoration committee. And, uh, it was just, uh, uh, we, we had some things discussed during town meeting, and we just wanted to make sure as we go forward.
Eleven oh one P M, Phil.
We had some clarification of what, what was being donated, what was being given, hang on, hang on. What was being donated by the library as we move forward, and, uh, I think it was a pretty interesting meeting, um.
We, we get clarification from the benefactor on what portions, um, they were willing to take care of, as, as I had called earlier and checked. They were not, um, doing any lighting in the core area, I didn't wanna have this finished without having lighting in there, I think we discussed it when you were back on the bo- board, Bob. Even if nothing was done on that, we were gonna put some sort of lighting up there, so when the fire department went up there, there was lights, um, so.
The other thing, in addition to the lighting, uh, on the stage, they were asking, they were a- actually adding a sound system.
Yes.
Which is, uh, I thought was great, and, uh, that's no, uh, in, in an expensive sound system.
And, and Mike and I made sure to clarify that that policy that has been floating around from the town hall restoration committee. That we will adopt at some point when the building gets done, um, was gonna be followed, and then, you know, just because all of this. Lighting and stage stuff was done, it was gonna have to be town, um, Dunbar and town residents types, uh, events, it's not gonna be anything from out of town, and. Unless it gets changed at town meeting some other time, we're gonna follow that policy that we looked at and reviewed, and, and maybe we're gonna make some changes to that still, but.
But, uh, so, some of the things that there were being donated, I had someone to reiterate what was discussed at town meeting, seating was gonna be donated. Uh, sound system was donated, uh, audio visual donated, lighting donated.
Hold on, project.
Code down project have donated, um.
They're looking, they're looking at a couple of options, we're getting pricing on flooring, uh, to redo the.
Refinishing flooring.
And also, uh, I already have the drywaller, that, drywall the inside of there, give a number to put three A's drywall on there, and we're gonna get that number to.
And people may ask, why do we need drywall in a building that's already got walls in it? The horsehair, the horsehair plaster is not, is about a hundred years old and it chills, it's falling out.
Part of the horsehair plaster is pulling from the plas- from the lathing?
You do know that all they did was put a brown coat on that, when I did the stairwell, and I was taking plaster, usually you have a plaster that's pushed into the lat.
Yeah.
And then they skim over with a finish coat.
Yeah.
What they did is, it's just a brown coat that was skinned over, they never had a finish coat on it. So, that's why it crumbles real easy, and you can see the cracks up there. And we hope that the drywall's done before the new floor is done.
See, they. We, we talked about that, we did talk about that too.
The drywall, I mentioned, just, um, doing a skim coat over the surface, and I said, I, I showed them the areas where it was pulling away, cause it hadn't been pushed into the lathing. And I said, I, I really want that to screw and hold it on there, so, it's a two-part process that I don't really wanna talk about, um, on here, but.
The, the drywall is a perfect solution for that, because that'll hold everything once it's screwed on.
But then again, we don't, we, we discussed with the benefactor, we don't have that money in our budget this year to do that type of project. We could either encumber some money, or we could do it in next year's maintenance budget, but we put that out there on the table, and it looks like depending on the number, that they might be willing to work on that as well.
So, it was a fruitful meeting, I just wanna say that, uh, Lee, we did not do minutes, do we need some minutes on that? I mean, I was a, a member of the, I, I'm not, so I can ask questions, but it wasn't really a meeting per se, it was just a.
It was just a clarification with the benefactor to what they were, are wanting to do.
They can be very general, but typically, when you have, uh.
It's all video, Don Larson video the whole thing.
He did. So, yeah, maybe Don can give you the, uh, well, I tell you what, I'll, I'll work with you to get some minutes made for that.
Okay.
So, you'd just be.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
Excuse me, um, when you craft that policy, I know you think it's already crafted.
No, it's a, it's a draft.
Craft that policy, it's just gonna be public, yeah, I'm not talking about pla- public hearing, but it's just gonna be something that I can sit on a video and.
Oh, absolutely, we'll, we'll discuss it.
You guys was doing that.
Yeah, we actually, I did that on video one time with Bob was party, we've read the policy.
You read the policy, but you didn't accept it.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's a draft.
It's gonna be to a certain extent, it's done.
Right, prior to acceptance, it'll be discussed.
Yeah, correct.
So, people can chime in.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see an issue with that at all. The one thing I did share with them at this meeting, wasn't, I don't know how well it was received, and Dave, I don't know how you felt, I just say, uh. I'm gonna insist upon a user's fee, uh, for, cause I, I said, we would create such a high standard of that building that's being brought up where it's usable. I wanna maintain it, I don't want to degrade with no cleaning, no, some people coming in with floors, not being, well, mocked up, trash everywhere, I don't wanna see that.
Left on.
Yes, and I wanna make sure that we have, uh.
They can leave the heat on.
A little bit, a little bit of twist, ma- maintaining it.
It can leave a crank up too.
All right, enough said of that.
Comes from downstairs.
All right, anything else, you're good?
No, I'm only halfway done. Um, now, to finish up Coffee with a Cop, it's, uh, what did I say, eleven oh one?
Eleven oh one.
Next Wednesday, and it is at the cafe. School Street Cafe still?
Uh-huh.
It is. Um. I did have more things as you were talking, come on. I'll save it till next week.
Okay, I forgot.
I wrote everything else down.
Uh, we are going to non-public times, so I like to, uh, read, uh, uh, going to non-public, we're saying ninety-one dash alpha, Roman number three, subparagraf, Roman number two, B.